Amazing how things can snap you right back, huh? All right, good, now I'm really off here, okay. Uh, like called meeting to order, Tracy or Bennett about that, my left handed. Uh, any items from the public? Okay, note there. Um, kind of motion to approve the agenda if there's no changes or modifications.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign of opposed. Motion carries for the agenda. Purchase order log, any questions for Tracy? All righty. Internal budget revisions? None of those? And change in status, a letter of resignation received from facilities for Kevin Cook effective July the 28th, 2023. And all that's good, and then we have the approval of the minutes, everybody was present.
I have one correction.
Okay.
And I'm really glad to move the, the meeting along, but uh, wait a minute. Oh, I saw it somewhere.
You can tell us.
Well, I thought it, I don't hear that. Never mind, I, it said I, I made a motion to recess and then I, I seconded it or something, and so I don't hear that.
You still under anesthesia?
Yeah, definitely, John, I don't know what happened.
Well, if you find it, we'll come back to it.
Yeah, never mind.
Never mind, all righty. We have the council calendars or commission calendars. Gosh, I gotta start thinking different there, don't I? We're here today on the Thursday, the third. Uh, let's see here, on Monday, we have planning commission. Uh, nothing on the eighth, the ninth, we have development authority and roundhouse authority. And next Thursday, on the 10th, we have the fire board. Any changes or correction to those? Gosh, September summer's almost depleted. We have bond reduction. Get this through here real quick. Um, North Mountains, uh, substation grading permit, BCP file 2104-126 tied to 2212-393. And 2307-248. And 2108-0004, bond number K40311075. Engineering department recommends that bond reduction.
Oh, here it is. I found it.
Okay, go ahead.
And on executive session, Commissioner Barnhart made a motion to go in the executive session and then Commissioner Barnhart segmented the motion.
What, well, you did it all then.
Yeah, man, I got it, I knew it was somewhere.
Okay.
But that was pending, sure.
Pending, okay. Then we have a bond reduction for Nestle Woods, section 2B. B C P file number 2105-200 tied to B C P file 086-04. Bond number SNN4010170. And the engineering department is making that recommendation. Do we have any comments or questions on those bond reductions? If not, a motion to approve the consent agenda with a modification of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
For the, um, reduction for Nestle Woods, section 2B.
Mm-hmm.
That is actually the warranty period is of, it's a bond reduction request for the full release.
Full release, okay. Thank you for clarifying. All righty. Motion to approve the consent agenda with the, uh, with the correction of the minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. We have the Honorable Mr. Hess from the assessors.
Man, we're just, just rolling right along today, aren't we?
Yeah, we are. Here we go. It's all yours.
Yeah, I've got a few here this morning, actually, first two I have is the taxpayer errors. We had two that reported vehicles, uh, didn't take them off, but so they had to come over as taxpayer errors. There's two of them for the amount of $344.63.
Mr. President, I'm due to accept the taxpayer error exonerations in the amount of $344.63.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed?
Aye.
Motion failed. Next.
Thank you. Um, personal property, office error, we got three pages of them, 24 of them. And a few of these in here are from the stack we had after we did some proofing. It's, it was in the office after we closed everything down last year, so there's some mistakes we found. So it all wasn't last week's, uh, activity at the counter. So there was a couple of them we were trying to clean up, but they're in there too. But I got three pages of them here, uh, total of 24. And for the listings, what we had listed there for the reasons. Um, and all 24 of them total up to $6,247.33.
Okay, you've heard the, uh, request. Uh, motion to approve the 24 personal tax exonerations due to office error.
Yes, Mr. President, I'd love to accept any, the exonerations as presented in the amount of $6,247.33 for personal property tax.
I have a motion to end a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. And we have, uh, real estate, eight real estate tax exonerations.
Yes, sir. Um, we have eight of those. Um, two of them were for, uh, property that the development authority purchased. We didn't get the exempt status put on them. And one of them is $18,000, the other is $4,000, so they total up, this eight totals up $28,798.92.
And room grants, $1,300, that's pretty good HOA.
Yeah, that's over at the Waywood Forest back there, back in there, so, yeah.
Is that common ground or stormwater?
Yeah, they have, they have a bunch of ground or whatever they use for farming and they plant things on them and do a lot of stuff, so they got a few.
Community farming. They also have a community pool, they have a community barn. It's a, it's a real nice.
They've been in there in 30 years.
Yeah.
Of course. That's what they used to.
Mr. Hess, just to clarify that, they're coming exempt, a lot is, but the taxes are still being portioned to, uh, on that.
Oh, yeah.
This isn't taking property and making it taxed. There shouldn't have been an extra tax ticket for the common property, which should be a portion to each unit on their taxes.
So this ticket's the only one we're exonerating, but however, it has been implemented on the other remaining parcels to the people?
Yes. Did we do that wrong?
Yep, okay. Do I have a motion or I did?
No.
I need a motion for the eight real estate tax exonerations, reason for office error.
Yes, sir, Mr. President, uh, looks to accept the exonerations as presented by the assessor for the real estate, uh, in the amount of $28,798.92.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries.
Good.
We have consolidation of property.
I think we have three of them. Uh, first one's for John McDonald, had the five parcels, they were all contiguous and he wanted to put them together and get one tax bill, so. We consolidate those and we need to include all that. Uh, you want me to do all three of them at one time?
Sure.
Uh, second one's for Larry Workman, had two parcels in the R district. We did the same thing, consolidated them, so they could get one tax bill. And we had, third one is Kenny, Kenneth Roberts, had two parcels in the N district. We pulled them together so we could get one tax bill, same there. And we can include all those.
Okay. Do I have a motion to, um, approve the three consolidation of properties?
I'll make a motion and consolidate the three properties.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed, motion carries. Thank you, sir.
Good, thank you.
Okay. All righty, board of meeting reports. Mr. Boyd.
Um, since we didn't go over this last week, um, CBB met, um, they reported that there were 31 new Airbnbs that came onto the map just, um, last month. Um, their earnings were up significantly in a month, over $100,000. Um, or, yeah, monthly, yeah, so, um, that was a big boost and put them over, not over, but I guess their projected budget even further ahead. Um, they also voted unanimously to allow Mark Jordan and staff to put together and team up with the state of West Virginia on the, um, AMFs, which is American Film Market, that's in Santa Monica, California, to go out there and market Berkeley County in partnership with the state of West Virginia. Will be the only county in partnership with the state of West Virginia going to promote, uh, Berkeley County and the state of West Virginia for getting these filmmakers back here to, uh, Berkeley County and the surrounding areas of West Virginia. Right now, there's some, some filming going on, um, in the Clarksburg area, but that's about it. But right now, West Virginia brought back the tax credits that have no ceiling, now they're unlimited, which makes for even bigger films to be able to come to the area. So, um, they thought, and I didn't disagree because this is something I've been pushing to, uh, really go gung ho on this because the amount of business and money, tax money that brought to Berkeley County when it was here before, they, they did away with the tax credits, was huge. Hotels stayed at 90-plus percent occupancy, I think 95% plus occupancy. Right now, they're down a little bit, hotels are about 71% compared to, um, last year, this time it was like 76%. Getting this here would bring, you know, jobs, the tax money, notoriety to, to the area. Anytime you get big films filmed and people want to come in and, and watch from the outside and see what's going on as well, so. They are doing a big push and they're going to spend the money that it takes to go out there and take a team out there to, uh, hopefully bring some of these, uh, big producers here. And another good thing that's good about this year, if you look at the film industry, they're on strike. And they'll be on strike until after this event in October, at least, before they break the strike, which means the producers all have time to go to this this year. So where normally they may be filming somewhere and have representatives there, that, actually, most of the producers will be at this event this year. And it's a good time to market those people and try to pull them back to Berkeley County.
Good deal.
That was a big point in the meeting.
Okay. Anything else?
That's it.
Mr. Barnhart.
Well, thank you, Mr. President. As you know, I was kind of out of commission, so I missed the, uh, the, um, events of last week. And I had no events of this week, so I have no events to report.
We're glad you're back and on the mend.
Well, I'm partially back.
Okay.
Still hurts.
Not sure. But we're glad you're here.
Thank you.
Mr. Cutler.
Yes, sir. Uh, sewer board meeting, uh, changed from Tuesday to last, last evening and business as usual, and then the storm order met following that. And Anthony, uh, I was told at that meeting that, uh, they're almost have the, uh, application ready for the sewer board to sign off on, storm sort, excuse me, storm order board to sign off on. And then once they sign off on it, it'll be coming to us for signature so we can get it submitted. so we can get it submitted finally. So. Okay, we're up to date on that. So we're moving along. We've been pushing hard on it. Okay, so, um, that's, that's the big news out of Stormwater. And then I was on the radio yesterday, but, uh, I, I went prepared to talk about county business and they wanted to talk about swimming pools. So, uh, I talked about swimming pools for 25 minutes. But, um, anyway, that, you know, there's a large concern in the community, which we're going to probably be a part of, and should be a part of. But what I'm trying to do is, is get all the entities together, city, county, border bed, hospital, uh, development authority, whomever could be a player, and get in one room and sit there and talk about this thing. Regardless of what they do at Lambert or what we do with aquatics in the future. A lot of people in the community feel that if we're ever going to get an indoor facility, that now's the time to pursue that. Uh, the big elephant in the room is finances, of course, and how do you pay for it? But, uh, would it be nice to have a facility like that? Absolutely. Would it be a draw for business? Absolutely. Uh, are we in a position now if we work together as a group to get it done? So, uh, but, but we need to bring everyone together and hopefully there'll be a meeting soon. And if we're asked to send representatives, I, I would like to be a part of that if possible, with maybe another commissioner and then potentially Gary as well, uh, to attend that meeting if we have one. So, um, it's just, uh, it's a hot topic right now in Berkeley County. And regardless of whether the city does it at Lambert, as far as the city owns Lambert Park and that pool. But obviously, uh, you know, the city owned War Memorial Park years ago and replaced that pool in the late 90s. And the county contributed half the money, half a million dollars along with the city to rebuild War Memorial back in the 90s. Uh, the city is part of the county and I think we're going to be asked to participate in funding this. So, so if we are, I think we should have some input on what's going to be the final result. So, uh, that's, uh, that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you so much. Mr. Kokonar.
Ah, yes, sir. Mr. President, no meetings this week, but I did have the opportunity and privilege to attend the groundbreaking at the CMC Steel, uh, on last Thursday with, along with yourself. And, uh, what a, what a very good day for us in Berkeley County. And, um, it was very well attended and very well managed. And I'm just glad we could be a part of that.
Well, and one more thing just about that. After the groundbreaking, we were at the train station with the governor. He was there as well. And we granted the grant for the museum and also another 9,000. That was $70,000 and $9,000 for the Roundhouse Spouting, uh, which are both, you know, 50/50 matching grants. But that was good. And, uh, we got to talk to him a little bit about, uh, the future of the Roundhouse with the project of the amphitheater. And, uh, we continue to push that down there, you know? He's in his last year. If he can help us at all, that'd be huge. Be, be big for Berkeley County and get that, get that whole project done down there.
Okay, uh, myself, I was at the groundbreaking ceremony with CMC. And Eddie and I, we actually got to be on Hoppy's radio show that day. We got to call in. And I think that's the first time I'd ever been on Hoppy's show. And I can't remember the last time that anybody was from Berkeley on there. But, but it was good.
He's a legend in this state, that's for sure.
He is. And then he got his start around here.
Jefferson County.
That's what I thought, yeah.
He was raised in Jefferson County.
Yeah, I had to tell him, I said, I was a first time caller, longtime listener, that's for sure. And, uh, but he, I did get a little laugh out of him on that one. But it was, it was a good day for Berkeley County. And like HD, I was down at the, uh, the train station when the governor, and with Randall Reed, uh, Smith, he, uh, was very, um, adamant about making sure Berkeley County is being recognized, you know, for our efforts and endeavors to, um, to promote our, our regional museum. What was I supposed to say? Oh, and I was on the radio station on Monday. I had to call in on WRNR. They were asking about the, uh, the CMC Steel groundbreaking ceremonies and, uh, what was I supposed to say?
Airport.
Airport, yep. And the airshow coming up. So we're, uh, I'm going to try to get back out there and with Nick and maybe do a little bit more advertising and promote the airshow coming up here on the 26th and 27th. On the 25th is going to be like the introduction of all the acts that's, that's going to be coming in. There's going to be partaking in a, um, I think they're catering a dinner for him. So I haven't heard too much particulars on it, but that's the point.
Are they doing any television advertising with that?
Uh, I don't know. I think it's all been going through social media.
You know, like on Comcast, you can kind of pick your channels and times. It's relatively cheap. And, you know, people watching the news or whatnot, you know, that commercial came through. Might, might be a good avenue to get.
We've got some time. Do you think the CBB would have any funds that they would want to put towards it? There we go.
They have a lot of funds.
Yeah, they did.
They were $17 short of $1 million this month.
You got ready to donate that 17 just to put them over the top. And that's all that I have. So, um, for the Board of Meeting Reports. Um, we've got some reappointments that we want to do here. Anybody? For the Criminal Justice Board, uh, their terms expire on August the 1st, 2023. Is anybody?
Yes, I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, do the reappointment for the Criminal Justice Board.
Okay. You want to give their names? Cora?
Cora Kowalski, Mike Lang, Harold Slaughter, Jamaica, I'm Meyer, Aaron.
Gardner.
Gardner. Karen Riley, and Patrick Patton.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
These are all people that are currently on there, correct?
Yes.
I, I make the motion to accept those names for appointment to the Criminal Justice Board.
Okay, have a motion to have a second?
A second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. Um, an appointment for Jennifer Smith to the Berkeley County Farmland Protection Board, is that?
I think it's just a formality because the position she's in as executive director of the authority puts her on that board as a voting member. She's actually a voting member.
Well, just make it official.
We ever made it official. So I make a motion that we, uh, place Jennifer Smith on the Farmland Protection Board.
A second. All right, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries. A new application received from Darren Pavarnik, uh, for the Berkeley County Roundhouse Authority. Bring him in for an interview or do we have an opening yet or you want to hold off?
I believe you do. Just going to bring you through here.
Okay. And he can make that happen. Thank you, Penny. And we're right on time here almost. Uh, Will Lawrence, fiduciary supervisor, uh, with the estate accounts of August for 34.
Thank you, commissioners. Uh, we actually have 35, and I'll explain why in just a second. Uh, we have 35 estates for final or interim settlement, uh, for the month of August, 2023. All estates proposed, uh, for settlement here this morning are nearly identical to those found here to read ahead. The only change is the addition of the final settlement of Eileen T. Seelman. As the commission may recall, uh, you ruled earlier this year to probate a copy of the decedent's will. Uh, the estate had already been started in test date without a will. Uh, the will was then, uh, granted to be added into probate. Uh, and as I say, uh, this commission ordered it to be so. However, the will itself had not been probated. The duty of probating a copy of the will is squarely on the executor, the holder of the will. So, uh, I guess there was kind of a loss of translation there and he just didn't do it until this morning. Uh, this morning, Mr. Meredith, the estate's executor, did file the will and paid the requisite filing fees. Thus, this estate was added last minute for your consideration. Additionally, all other estates, uh, proposed for settlement, uh, have been legally or actually noticed of their proposed pending settlement status as prescribed by West Virginia law. Furthermore, my office has received no written notice of objections to date from any interested parties of the estates herein. Lastly, all claims of debt publicly, uh, claims of debt publicly filed against each of these estates have either been released, is paid in part or in full by creditors themselves, or the estate has been declared insolvent, meaning no probate assets remain to pay heirs, beneficiaries, and creditors alike. Without objection from any present, uh, interested party in the audience today, I ask for this commission's consideration for the approval of the 35 estates for final or interim settlement in the month of August, 2023.
Okay. All righty, do I have a motion to approve the 35 estate accounts? Have a motion to have a second?
Second.
Twice. Any further discussion? All those in, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Like sign opposed. Motion carries, sir. Give you a little grant here.
Nothing to be scheduled?
Uh, no, I have an inkling that, uh, I have some fiduciary commissioners who are about to finalize their orders. You will be hearing from me very soon. Anyway, that's all I have this morning.
Always glad to hear.
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you, Will. Next up is Tom, or are we, you taking care of this, Tony, or is Tom coming up? Okay.
10:15.
10:15. Yeah. This is next. Yeah, go ahead, Gary, if you want to fill in a couple.
Sure. So, over the years, you've had some requests for, for building usage, um, for teen court. Historically, the, the commission really has supported the effort. Um, you've seen it through multiple judges, from Judge Wells to Judge Fonsen. Um, I met with Judge Redding, uh, who is now chief judge. And, uh, I forget his name, maybe one second. Luann Kramer, um, who I believe has now moved on to his serving position as running teen court. But there's, there's been another request for the third time, uh, to support the teen court effort. The judge is willing to let them use his courtroom of any use. Really what it means to this body is a little bit of overtime from the court marshals. I've already spoke to Mike Lang and they have no issues supporting it. A little bit of energy usage because we need to condition the area of the building they're going to be in for this one, potentially only one night a month. Uh, they may ask for more time. I believe it's a great use to share a resource of a beautiful building to support a cause that's very effective in that, uh, the judge obviously does, uh, the state funds the effort. So really, this is just an ask. I didn't want to approve it unless the commission agrees. The building will stay secured. Our folks will be there. But just let them use it on this. And they'll work completely with the judge's schedule. There's, there's no inconvenience to the court for them. Plenty of time. So if the commission agrees, I would, I will. It's, it's a great use. It helps out a good cause.
Explain what it is, actually.
So the, it, basically what happens, these folks get, the kids get applied and it's, it's a trial, if you will, of their peers with themselves. I mean, it's, it's pretty impressive how they come in and they go through this whole process. They use the courtroom just like a regular court. Uh, and they have homework. They present, briefs, and they do all of it. Anthony, do you know the specifics, how it works?
It's high school, high school.
Yeah, it's a diversionary program for juvenile offenders. I used to help with it in Jefferson County, but where, where I would help students prepare and actually have the judge. It's supposed to be a trial. It's up there to be a judge. It's, um, yeah, it gets, and all of the defendants, they go through the process, also then have to serve as jurors or they can even participate in cases. It's somewhat like a real, uh, trial, but, you know, rules of procedure and that's not all.
Aren't exactly. I've not been to law school yet.
Yeah. So, but it, that's pretty much what it is. They.
So I assume this trial moves on a lot faster than the normal in real, in real terms.
None of them are, none of them are more than a half hour. In the sentences then, which dates the panel of other, you, many of them are prior offenders, gets to determine the punishment, which is, is community service of some variety and usually having to serve.
So to qualify to participate though, do you have to be in, you had to be in some kind of?
So you have to be, yes. You, there has to be a juvenile proceeding. Now, there are only certain offenses and the prosecutor has to agree to it. So this isn't, if somebody commits armed robbery, a lot of them are, uh, having cigarettes, it's, oh, things like that, not big.
Criminal acts.
Yes. Uh, some of them are, I recall there were, uh. It's not.
But truthfully, it'd be a good program for any child that wanted to participate, whether they're in trouble or not.
So, yes.
Just to see how the system works and all. Because most people, when they call, get called for jury duty for the first time, don't have a clue what's, what's going on.
So, yeah, there are a number of students that aren't defendants that do participate just because they're interested.
Right.
In this, um, when I was ever in Jefferson County doing it. Now Judge Hammer's kids are very smart. Presenting cases better than most of the attorneys around here. It is an interesting program.
It's a great use of the building. And, and really the ask is just that it, you know, the commission has no issue that we, we let them do it before they put them in.
Do you want to move?
No, just consensus to the commission that it's okay to allow them to use the building.
Sure.
I would say.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think it's a great opportunity. And also, uh, it's, it's another layer of partnering, uh, you know, with the judicial system that, that we're already in.
Make it happen.
They'll be excited. Thank you.
All right. Anything else for now? All right. Tracy?
Okay, Tracy in front of the call.
Yeah, well, come on up. You're up, Tracy. Grants Administrator, um, accepted, acceptance of FEMA and BRIC grant award on behalf of Berkeley County Public Service Stormwater District.
In December 2021, Berkeley County previous council granted Berkeley County Public Service Stormwater District permission to apply for the fiscal year 21 Building Resilient Infrastructure and Communities Project, which is known as BRIC, for a U.S. Route 11 and CR-12 flood mitigation study. The BRIC program provides grants to states and in turn provides subawards to local governments for cost-effective mitigation activities. The Stormwater District needed to apply through the county to be eligible for this grant. FEMA awarded $225,000 for a project total with $168,750 federal share with $56,250 match from the Stormwater District. Acceptance of this award by the commission is needed as well as directing the president to sign the award.
Okay.
Do I have a motion? I'm going to make a motion to approve. And I wanted to say, Tracy, I was at the Stormwater meeting last night and they were very complimentary of you and your staff making this happen. So thank you very much.
Do I have a second? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, sir. I, I know that, uh, last year or perhaps a year before, actually, the year before last. Now, they actually did some work in that area, uh, of Route 11 in the Berkeley Station area to, there was a, an older stormwater management system there that had been somewhat not well maintained. And they, they went back in and recreated that area to, because that area is prone to, to flooding. So I, I know that they're doing work in that area already and it was through that grant of the previous year, I'm assuming. And also, there is a 72-unit apartment building that's going to be built in that area, uh, in which, you know, we, we were concerned at the planning commission about the stormwater there. So they are very well aware of the flooding there. So to be able to work with this, uh, area to help improve that flooding in that area.
Probably the most critical area in the county right now.
It is. The Route 11 was, was flooded for a week.
Yeah. Couple, like four years ago?
Five.
Five. All righty, got a motion and a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Like sign opposed, motion carries, thank you. All righty.
I wanted to say something before Tom comes up, but, Gary, congratulations on the grant with the fiber optics thing, because just, this news this week.
Yeah, it is.
Should be mentioned in our meeting, I think, we're just going to expand on evidence.
I can, so if you remember, the county commission, county council at that time, over a year ago, went out to bid for a partner to develop broadband, there's a bunch of money, and you've heard, there's now one point two billion dollars available. Prior to that, it was about thirty-seven million that was laying around. You had to create a project, they didn't want you to just say, hey, we want to do a county, you had to create a project. So, we worked with the commission, and the commission said, for purposes of the majority of passes, meaning the majority of people under, underserved, was west of I eighty-one. So, we took the broadband mapping that the government, the state has been working on with the FCC, and we identified all of those points, west of eighty-one, Edgewood, clear down to Jarrettstown, and so on and so forth. We made application, or, excuse me, we went out to bid, there were Comcast, Frontier, and all points broadband out of Virginia, they all responded, we interviewed, formed a committee, Eddie was on the committee with us, and we selected Frontier as a partner. Commission approved that recommendation, and we submitted an application for grant funding. The, the total grant, I believe, or the total project's about eighteen million dollars. This is fiber to the home, so this means all of the folks out our way that are under or underserved, under, underserved, are about to get fiber to their houses.
Do they have to apply for it, or do you?
They do not, they do not, it just happens. Now, they don't get the service, right, but the fiber to the premise is part of this project. It's hundreds of miles of fiber that's going to happen. The governor announced it last week, I believe, even last Thursday on CMC, it was an announcement real close to that, but it's going to happen. The, the next process to happen is some paperwork between us and Frontier in this public partner partner, public, ugly private partnership. It's all belong to them, we don't own anything, but this body facilitated that effort. So, the next step that we'll do, once that project gets off the ground, is to look at identifying the rest of the county as a second project. We already have lots of people asking questions, hey, what about us over here, Scrabble area, and so on and so forth, and that's, we would have asked for the whole county if we could, but they would not let us, we had to identify, and there were more un and underserved to the western, the warden east, that's why we do it, it's all based on statistics, and it must have looked good on the application, because it got approved, one of the few, so here goes. I mean, this is a great thing for the folks out there that don't have it, and it will, it, it's going to spark development in areas that there wasn't, you know, as you all know, water, you follow water and sewer, well, now you're going to have water, sewer, and broadband, so everything someone wants is going to be available.
When does this start?
Soon as everything's ratified and things start moving, Jim, the, the total project was about twenty-four months to completion. They already have boots on the ground doing construction in the area now, and that level of construction, like everything else, momentum, you just keep sliding from one piece to the other, so immediately, as soon as the money starts to move and the contracts are signed, you're going to see it happen fast.
When, when you put all this broadband in, is there any auxiliary structures that there should be placed?
Typically, they upgrade their, their central offices, where they have the locations, where the, all the connections are made. I doubt you'll see much brick and mortar. In this instance, remember, Frontier is the ILEC for the state, so they're, they're the incumbent licensed exchange carrier, local exchange carrier, so they already have rights on poles, they already have rights on the ground, so that was really attractive, because they didn't, they're not going to have to deal with that stuff.
Is the, will the fiber be put, placed on poles and then go underground?
It can be both, it can be both, and part of the process and part of the, the factor that made us recommend Frontier to you was, I want to say it's six hundred feet from the point of presence for them, that they'll go as part of their install to your house, I'll quote me on that, we have it documented, but they would go further than what the other vendors would go before they would say to the consumer, hey, we need X to go on the next amount of feet, so their number was really, really nice. And then, to go along with that, part of the federal initiative is, if you're at a certain level of income, the first thirty dollars of broadband, most of them will qualify, and they're, they're actually going to get fiber to their house for free, with service, so it's.
Explain, Gary, once it's in place, you, you don't have to be a Frontier customer to, you do not do to get service, and that's what confuses people, because a lot of people have given up their landline, friends to Frontier, because they just use yourselves.
Sure, sure, so you don't, you won't have to buy voice service, this is available just for broadband, so no different than, like us as a, a company that subscribes to services that just delivers internet, you'll have that opportunity at your house also. So, it, it's a true game changer for Berkeley County, as you continue to evolve and grow and provide services, and, you know, you talk about all of the things you, you try and do with, you know, to make the community bigger and better and healthier, this is one of the things that West Virginia stars as a whole, I mean, it's all over the media, you know, one of the things where we are at the bottom of the list is broadband, so it, it, it's just, it's just an awesome achievement for the commission to be able to partner, facilitate, make the grant look that attractive, and be awarded, to make it happen.
What speeds, how fast is this?
Well, it's fiber, so it's the speed of light, so it's fat.
Fast as you're going to get.
Yes, as fast as you could ever get.
I have no idea.
So, they, they have tier packages, and that was one of their presentations, almost, I think, one of their top-tier packages is like three gig, to the tune of less than a hundred and seventy dollars or something like that, so I live rural, I have a bonded three meg, I have six meg, and I pay seventy dollars a month for, for six meg, you're talking same here, so I'll have opportunity for a hundred meg at less than I pay for six meg.
Gee.
It's, it's crazy.
And here's another problem, back where I live, in west of Back Creek, North Mountain, Frontier has a zone Route nine, and I live shouting distance from Route nine, but I can't get, I can't get cable and stuff, because the lines where I live is a dead-end road, and they were buried lines, and they refused to replace it. So, I don't know if they're going to, hopefully, they will replace that and then get it with the fiber.
You will.
So that those of us that are left out now, you know, like, most people have internet, now they get it through their cable and internet together, some of us in that area don't even have that option, and I've got the seventy dollar thing from USA, and I paid seventy a month to get service. It's a, it's a game changer.
It is a.
It really is, and it's, it's really great.
And also, be noted that the commission had a financial commitment to this, oh, one million dollars, to help facilitate fiber in the valley.
That's right, so part of your effort is you, you promised as part of the application to the partnership, a million dollars, the, I didn't have the exact numbers in front of you, but I think the Frontier was like eleven million, and then the, the award was like eight million.
Does this include from the crest of North Mountain West, or?
For the most part, yes, for the most part, yes, that.
Because I know people at the, at the base of the mountain.
Right. There'll be a map to come, there'll be a map, it was all done from mapping that was available in the actual address points facilities, if you will, that are going to be available and get made will, will come. It expanded, when, when we first made application, it was for X, and then the feds went through, and they did some more surveys and said, okay, now we want to include this, so it's bigger than it was initially. For those who aren't identified as part of this project, they will be part of your second project that you identify, select a partner. The, the intent is to have one hundred percent of Berkeley County have broadband to the home right now, so again, one point two billion dollars has been set aside just for this, so we got a piece of millions, it was a hundred million total, now there's one point two billion to go again, so I would suspect every Berkeley County house will have a fiber opportunity in the next five years.
Five years, that's, I guess, too, yeah.
If everybody remembers, you know, during COVID, when their children were not in school, they were still trying to work from home, and it was very, very difficult for.
Sit there in McDonald's parking lot.
Yeah, well, you know, they put some hot spots on buses and whatnot in the valley and tried to, or, or a lot of kids went, had to drive to the school in order to be able to get service, and so that was another real driving factor for the decision to, to help up the, the valley area.
Thank you for that, thank you, Gary, and I appreciate all your work on it.
All right, next up is Tom Gilliam, Voters Registration Supervisor, Approval of Early Voting Locations.
You just told everything I had to say.
Well, you can just confirm what I said. All right, how's that?
I will confirm that, we're good. No, we have two locations, as you saw in the read, our northern location is going to be the Huntington Hurricane Club. The dates for that and the southern location, which is the Pike Side Fire Auxiliary Location down in Pike Side, the substation, will be May first through eleventh next year. Election Day for primary is the fourteenth, and then for the general is October twenty-third through November second. Both of those early voting times will be minus the Sunday of that time, and then the early, or then the election day will be November fifth. We have a total of eighty-eight thousand two hundred voters now for the county, second in the state, and so we're looking forward to taking care of them. We will still have a central location here, talked to Gary about potentially using our storage room downstairs, if that's, if we can work that, if not, there's other opportunities here in the building and area to make sure we get it taken care of, but that's where we stand. We're ready, as we can be at this point, and everything that has gone in the past has been taken into effect to make sure that we are as ready for anything in the future, so if there's any questions I can handle.
How many people will take the staff, these three?
Uh, we're, we're looking at about thirty-five, oh, for the three, eleven at each, and then two rovers.
Okay.
It's going to really be needed in the next election, believe me, because twenty-twenty-four is going to be unbelievable, how it turned out, particularly the primary, because that's, most of the race is going to be decided in the primary.
That's what we.
Really appreciate y'all's effort on it, Tony and Tom, your staff, it's, it's something we need desperately, because it would really help. I stood in the line down here last year ago, late, and it was, it's, it's a great need, they were out on the sidewalk all the way down there.
Two years ago, they were clear up, turned up Church Street, and were out on King Street to get in.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I, I know, I've.
Got rained on.
I appreciate your, your efforts, you know, this, this commission had previously approved
Location.
Locations prior, and it, it, the deadlines are not met to be able to qualify for that, so I appreciate you being out in front of us. I think it will be a lot more convenient for the voters to be able to get the opportunity to go and vote, so I appreciate what you're doing there.
It was my pleasure, Tony has written me to make sure we got it taken care of, and we got it, so we're good.
Just out of curiosity, I'd like to know sometime, how many Republican of those eighty-thousand, how many Democrat, how many independent there are?
I can tell you there's thirty-nine thousand four hundred twenty-seven, if I remember correctly, this morning, of the Republicans, but I'll go ahead and put it together at least, because I was just pulling, I think, on the top of my head.
I think you were shocked at how many independents you are in Berkeley County, man.
Yeah, I can go ahead and pull that information and send it out to you. If you land it up.
Yeah, if you would, send us an email or something, that'd be great, thanks.
Mr. Patrissi, I'm sorry, I was going to open the podium to you, do you have any comments or questions?
They've done a great job, the staff, they have a large staff, they, they've asked everything out, wanted to do, be prepared, be sure we'll have other issues that'll come up, but we're prepared to handle those things, we walked through Sheriff Palmer about some security issues, I believe Tom needs to communicate with the new chief of police, just in case we have some issues. Down, we're about thirteen, thirteen seconds, we're going to, in March, so.
Yeah, Tony, that was my concern, is on the satellite places, is security after hours when everybody's gone and stuff, so obviously, I'm sure you're addressing that, but that's, that's a huge concern there.
Yeah, we have a few little maintenance projects, we have to do it for Pike Side, Mr. Goode and I were aware of that, addition to the complex down there, we have some handicap brands, we have portable down there, with the plates, not sitting, you can make it out, but not do that. It's not, it sounds a little rural, like, but it's really not, so that's why we wanted to get this.
Be here before you know it.
Highway, because the closer we get for the primary, there will be some, you know, you want to.
Right.
And we want to thank you all for the support.
I want to thank Marsha for keeping you straight. Thank you, sir.
To be clear, prior to the county commission certifying these satellite or community voting locations, you'll have to publish notice in the paper thirty days prior to you taking that action, then you have to actually take that action ninety days before the election occurs, and then after this first election where that's done, then you can redo that every year without the public notice requirements, just certify.
Locations.
The cert, the location, not less than eighty days, not longer than fifty, something like that, so I think what they're asking is, is we're ready to move forward with the publication of the votes locations, and then thirty days after that, the commission will take action, and in that order will have the findings, it's, it's adequate parking, it's adequate accessibility, all those things are, so, it's consensus.
Did, we wouldn't need a motion, or, no, we should, not yet, okay.
No, this would just be, because you're not taking action on it, before, you needed not only the clerk's recommendation, but you also needed the approval of the party chairperson, and that was still in the regs, and last time, we ran into that issue, and we never did, the councils moved forward to that publication. Balls dropped, but anyway, that's, we don't need that requirement anymore, the parties can come before you, or not, or to the clerk, and say, hey, we want the new location, and it should be here, but that's all it says in the, the parties' role, so I think the process now would be to publish the proposed location, allow thirty days for it.
I think that would be our consensus, then.
Thanks.
Thank you all so much. All right, we have, say we take a break, but we don't need one.
We completed everyone.
Yeah, I know, so, except for the executive session?
Yeah.
All righty. Sheriff, did you have a, something you need to tell us, or a public comment or anything, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
I just wanted to.
I just want to make sure we recognize you.
No, that's fine. I wasn't planning on, but I, I do think the commission needs to know that our office hosted the first-ever tri-state emergency preparedness event, collaboration with the Berkeley County Schools, I can't say enough about the assistance that the Summit Point Training Center provided, and all those from my office, deputies, sergeants and stuff that participated in that, because we, it was a large undertaking, but it, it is the first time that you have Washington County and Frederick County, Virginia, Washington County, Maryland, that participated in a multi-jurisdictional response, and it is the first time that you had several different elements, like nine-one-one dispatch, Randy Lilly's office, and some technologies like Grohns, some of the command staff, like myself and a major from Washington County, Major Knight, you had the educators doing role-playing, or the, the principals doing the role-playing, you had EMS doing entries and taking care of the wounded, you had, and that was, and law enforcement responded to over several, or seven different scenarios, ranging from neutralizing a, an active threat to a mental hygiene issue, so we challenged them pretty well in the morning, and in the afternoon, we took all the role players, the educators, put them in a classroom, and we taught a two-hour. and we taught a two-hour beacon emergency preparedness course that just showed them strategies to implement in an emergency situation, better increase their chances, take care of themselves in the classroom environment. So, every, literally, everybody got a piece of that. So, I'm proud to say that we've heard nothing but good comments, and like, you know, it was the best training we ever had, type of comments from the principals and stuff. So, I just wanted to make that announcement, we, this was a four-month in the making plan, and, you know, it, it went off past my expectations. I was really proud of that.
I think there was a little flurry of activity on social media about it, that some people were wondering what was, what was taking place.
Yeah, we, we posted the signs out, we posted, we did door knocking around the schools, replacing them with, and I was really proud of it, that's all I needed.
Did the city of Martin post this, or?
Yes, sir.
Good, very good. I want to say that Sheriff, while you're here, that Commissioner Governor and I attend a monthly meeting with the school safety group, and I've been thoroughly impressed with how organized it's been, and what the efforts they're making here to protect our children. And I can't thank you enough, I just wanted to say that, and we appreciate it very much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I had the opportunity to attend briefly on the 26th, and just to see the, the cooperation and the partnerships that were, that were being developed that day is really critically important. And, you know, hopefully, that dent will never happen, but if it does, I have high confidence that, that we're, we'll take care of the situation very professionally.
We, we had some concern, when the governor appointed these regional people, there's six regions, I believe, and he, Blummer is our rep, but he's a retired state trooper, and I, I feel a whole lot better about it now. It's not a new bureaucracy at all, it's just one person, and he's involved in training the schools and working with them, but he's cooperating and attending these meetings and working with our sheriff. So, it, it's not going to be who's the chief here, we know who the chief is, he's just going to be another player to help if there is a situation. And so, I feel better about it than I did when he first announced that. I thought it was going to be some bureaucracy that, you know, we need the money here, to hire resource officers, and let you do your thing.
And he was, he was in attendance, he was in attendance to the sheriff's training. But that all took leadership, and, and thanks, thanks for your leadership.
Your work, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, we do have an executive session to go into. Will there be any action coming out, do you think?
Don't think so.
Don't think so, okay.
President Louie.
I want to go with items.
I, I did, who knows? I just texted him. Curtis, you don't need to be here.
Yeah, he does, because I got to talk to him, he wants to hold on. Tell you what, we're going to go into executive session, had a motion.
I'm moved to go to executive session for.
Personnel.
Personnel.
In real estate.
In real estate.
Good job.
Appreciate it.
And a motion to go.
Thank you.
Do I have a second?
Tony. Catlet, nice seeing you, I haven't seen you for a couple of years.
Yeah.
Jim made the motion. H D seconded.
Oh, Jim said.
Okay, we're in executive session, thank you.
Okay, we're back in session. We are out of executive session. I guess do I need a motion to come out or no? We're just out of executive session. No action will be taken so there's nobody here from the public to speak. So Mr. Barnhart?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. And you know, I think I'd really like to recess.
We are in recess. Thank you.